It doesn't bother me. Alright, so I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Eric?
Eric?
Here.
I'm ready.
Here.
Here.
So if we could just, for the record, just note that Patrick Flott has been excused. Okay. Commission secretaries report on posting of the agenda. Next up is ceremonial items. We postponed this award till the month of April. Next up is presentations to the commission. This is a moment for members of the public that wish to make comments on items that are not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment? The only one that I wanted to read out to make sure that it gets on the record is the is a public comment that was written into us by email. And it comes from, his name is Ed Morell. And here's what he wrote. "I strongly recommend safety improvements on the West Luchessa Bridge that would better protect bicyclists and pedestrians who cross over the creek. As you are probably well aware, the two traffic lanes in the bicycle pedestrian lane are narrow. The bicycle pedestrian lane is only marked with a white line and plastic flexible delineator posts. The white line and plastic delineator posts will not protect any bicycles or pedestrian if a vehicle driver fails to stay in their narrow lane. As an immediate solution, I suggest installing precast concrete barriers along the white line where the plastic flexible delineators posts are from Prince Valley to the west side of the bridge where the bicycle pedestrian lane transitions to the sidewalk. In addition, perhaps lowering the speed limit or installing rumble strips would be helpful as well. I raised a safety issue a year or so ago. I recall learning that there was a plan to improve and increase the bridge capacity with better accommodations for bicyclists and pedestrians. Not having seen or heard any progress on this, I'm raising the safety issues." Thank you, Ed Morell. He would have been here tonight, but he had a conflict in another arrangement with Board of Directors, I believe, on the church. So that's just something I wanted to make sure we get that included. And if we need to bring it up as a discussion item, then obviously that has to go on a future agenda. That's not what this was for. Okay, next up is Carolyn. The VTA, Valley Transportation Authority Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee reports.
Hello, may I just get my report in on time this time, fairly. So you shouldn't have that under you. There wasn't a whole lot that you shouldn't have on your board. But maybe the recommendation that the need to increase the education and encouragement part of the Measure B funding for the first couple of years. But that's just a recommendation. Specifics on how people who proposed that, if you can think of them. The BEP program, we were provided after the meeting with our category two list of statuses, but being as I was told that the category one list, this was the last one. Then the difference in the couple of them weren't quite up to date. I shared that with you all.
Actually, I printed it out so they can see what you're, yeah, what you're talking about. Just the, those three Gilroy ones on the category one.
If this was category two, there's only two. There's Lions Creek and there's many more. Anyway, it's, it wasn't. I don't know if those are up to date or not. So the category two. Oh, there's one with two, towards Kirk Trail. And has the status given, has still in the design phase. The Lions Creek, this is the Lions Creek Trail West. And it has status that's environmental preliminary engineering completed. I mean, Gary would probably know if that's accurate. And then the other thing that didn't get on the report is that Lauren Ledbetter had put together a memo that she provided to some of the other committees on dockless scooter practices and procedures at other jurisdictions. So that's something that the road starts to work through. She thought it would come back. Survey the chair. Any questions?
So you're saying that Lauren did prepare and she did distribute for the committee her scooter recommendations or her accumulation of best practices from other cities?
It's a survey. It's not necessarily best practices. But yeah, she mentioned at the meeting that she was asked to share it and she sent that out. That's true.
Could you share that with me specifically? Because we're trying to put together something for Gilroy as well, because there's interest in scooters from this committee as well. Trying to gather some information on how we should proceed.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? I had just a couple. So now reading through that, the category one projects that are on there, now I sort of understand what they're talking about. Before, when it says on Santa Teresa Boulevard to the Bike Ped Bridge across Lion Street, meaning like that's the one that's already installed up there? How they had plans to add the 12-foot wide Bike Ped Trail segment? The only other one that I was curious to see more information on, and it says that it's in the design. I don't necessarily know what that means, that it's already been designed. But the one that says Northern Uvis Creek Service Road Trail, Gilroy Gardens Extension Trail. Or this one says from the, on Santa Teresa Third to Bursel Bridge. This is the, like, construction of a 12-foot wide Bike Ped Trail that will connect it and expand existing Uvis Creek Trail system.
Where do you have it?
I believe that's the section that's going in by something that the new development there, Bike Third and.
So that's already been constructed? That's what I'm wondering if this is built off that? Or did they, did Measure B actually give the city funding for that? That's where I'm like. Yeah. Because this was identified, and I know the developer's the one that built that one, right? And this was for $2.5 million for design.
I don't know if the history is that.
This is before him. It's before everybody.
So this unfortunately falls into the category of a lot of these other projects that myself and my staff are running into is that we have no history on these. Unfortunately, Gilroy didn't keep really great records when it came to the history on a lot of the projects. This is great information. It's something we also received, I think, from the VTA. And so we'll go ahead and, you know, this is another reminder, this brings it fresh in your mind. We'll just research and see if we can find out some status on this and maybe be able to report that back next month.
That'd be nice.
I will share that category two list with you too. They're talking about the two projects.
Okay, great. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, especially if somebody had something in mind of a extension trail to Gilroy Gardens. I know that would benefit numerous peoples. And I would, hopefully, we didn't leave any money on the table.
There's still money and it can be quite hard to.
Hopefully, it's still not designing.
Somebody, somebody back there is designing. This is a question for staff. Do we have, what about the education encouragement funds? The Measure B, have we received any of those? And do we have a plan on how we're gonna proceed with those?
Not at this time.
So we haven't even gotten a?
Can't believe we've received any.
Okay. And were those funds supposed to come to the city already? Is that what you got from that meeting?
No, what I got was that the the funds were still coming and I I didn't find that one. The Measure B budget we looked at was four minutes, two years, not this year, it was 2021.
We're working with Lauren and trying, at the VTA, and trying to get better educated on some of this information as well.
Yeah.
There's still plans for it to be able to provide funding now.
And there are a lot of committees that the VTA is sponsoring. There's everything from the SONG group, which is the traffic group, which Neuron is actually going to start attending his first meeting tomorrow. There's the CIP Working Group meeting that my senior capital projects person is attending. There's the LOSDMT meeting that I'm attending, TAC meeting that I'm attending.
So it's like flowing through all these.
All these VTA meetings and all of us are hearing different bits and pieces of all these, you know, funding sources. And so we're trying to get our heads around a lot of this information.
Yeah. Well, that kind of transitions into, into, you know, knowing that we have two representatives. One was just appointed, Marie Blankley, our council member, under the VTA Board. And Larry Carr was in the Morgan Hill City Council. So, you know, all these discussions that we're having, they don't obviously, some of them, they might be hearing other stuff too. But, you know, we are the advocates in that Morgan Hill Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Group. You know, they're, they're the advocates, the other person that sits on that seat next to you. You know, hopefully up at VTA and the feedback, you know, whatever we can give that's going to end up coming in front of them and whatever information we can provide and so they can speak up during those public comment periods and either find out like, hey, where's, where's the money or what do we need to do? So we know those steps. I really want to try to play that, that, that part for them. And be there, you know, be there speaking with them and give them the education on whatever they need.
Right. And staff seems really open to comments from staff counting most of the voices on the committee are from the other parts of the county. After, like, this extension that they kind of fit on, like Hawaii or the United States or not. But they're definitely, especially more sound county.
Yeah.
Some of the issues and things will work. And it's really wonderful to have Lauren and Carolyn there.
Nice.
Actually, a question from Gary. So the B05 talks about connection from the east side of Santa Teresa over to Christopher High School. So that intersection, is that county intersection?
Which intersection?
Santa Teresa at Christopher High School. So if you take, I mean, isn't Santa Teresa all county?
No. We went through this the other day.
Santa Teresa Day. Santa Teresa Day Road. Well, and I was just gonna say is that the second one, there's no connection. There's no way to get across that intersection. So even if there is a discussion here about putting up a beautiful bike path on the other side of Santa Teresa, there's no way to get across that intersection. Just something, I know it's in design phase and whatever, but something I think we should be cautious of.
Thank you, Carolyn. Alright, next up is item number seven, the Consent Calendar. And I'm going to go ahead and pull the Public Bike Fund and so we can talk about that. So I'll pull item 7C, but if I could get a motion for number seven, A, B, D, E, F, G, and H.
My motion approved.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay. Consent calendar passes. So the Public Bike Fund that you guys just got in front of you. So this is a document that I wanted to eventually get in front of us and maybe on a quarterly basis have it. This is trying to mirror off what the Public Art Committee already has. And what it'll do is it'll keep track of, and I didn't even know about, this is perfect, actually keeping track of our training budget too. But it'll keep track of the decal donations that we're receiving. And then that way, and we'll know what the expenses are. And as we move forward, we won't try to play catch up to remember. But I can already see a couple items in here that, that are, that are different. It says there's no available funds, but I know we haven't gone through all our training budget yet. So over the next month or whatever, we can kind of go, go through this just to make sure that it's, make sure that it's right. And then we'll bring it, maybe we'll bring it back cleaned up a little bit more for the next meeting. Because we.
How are you reading this? Are you reading?
The training budget. It says that there's, what does this mean? Unreserved available? Or is this?
I think, I think they're two different things. I think you're looking at your training budget up here. It's saying you have $1,000 annually and you don't have any expenses, so the balance is $1,000. They haven't spent any money this year so far off training.
We did though. Remember, we went to the, we went to the bike and Sean went to the conference. So we'll, I think we should just, just clean this up offline and just get it spurred away.
There's some missing charges on there.
Yeah, it's fine. So we'll, we'll bring this back next month. And I think I had a note that we had 520 left in the training to use by the end of this fiscal year. So there are some conferences that, that come up, that are, the registration's going to be coming up before the end of the year for some local conferences that, not including the Bike Summit. So maybe we can start looking at that. Maybe one of us would want to attend that so that we can not leave that, that training budget on there, yeah. Okay.
Formatting perspective.
This is perfect. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, this is the one, this is the one that they do for Public Art. We're actually, and I know we have an account number. I remember Bryce gave it to us. If everybody's okay, I'd like to get Neuron up next for item under Old Business. D, well, did you want to do the Highway 152 first or the sign update for Neuron?
So the sign.
Sign? So if you guys don't mind, if we move items C and D up next, is that okay with everybody? Good? Okay, so next up will be Bicycle Friendly Community Sign Update. Neuron?
So I'll set this up as Neuron is going through this. So we were asked at the last meeting to go ahead and identify some potential locations. So we, Gilroy have been lucky enough through the work of the chair, thanks for getting through that, to receive a, I believe it's a bronze Bike Friendly Community Stats, which is wonderful. Very excited about that. So we want to go ahead and install signs throughout the community to let those bicyclists and, and drivers also know. So what we've done is we've selected, I believe it's 14 sites that we'll go ahead and share with the commission this evening. Some of these that you'll see are locations where we can install signs now. Some of them are, have to wait for some construction to be done, but Neuron will go through those. But what the intent is, is to put the major entrances to the city, both in bike facility locations that bicyclists know, but also in locations where drivers are going to see the major entrances to the city, where folks are getting on the freeway, folks are entering from other communities or entrances to the city where there are also bike facilities. So they know, so maybe the next time they decide to come in to Gilroy, they'll do it on a bike. So with that, Neuron, you want to walk us through maybe some of those locations?
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me today. So maps over here. So this is kind of a general map of our bicycle route to the mission. I hope this update is a little bit more current. With that said, the first sign that we're proposing is by Christopher High School. So as you're coming from downtown Santa Teresa, it's right there by kind of a southbound direction. And kind of in terms of efficiency, saying we're looking at installing them on the six street. Some of these locations though, it's going to be a little bit outside, we don't have street light on, so we'll have to. This is one thing I do have. Some of the street light that I've been getting used to, where it's all the signs are. These signs are, just trying to give you a look at that. This is what generally what it looks like. Off the American Bicycle website. They are about 18 or 20. This is going to be small. I speak very well. So with that said, on sign location number one. Kind of just possible, can you guys speak back as people sign the signs so that all know signs can work, signs should.
And just so that I might, you know, we don't have to approve all 14 or 15 locations. You know, there's, there's something called sign of light. We certainly don't want to have so many signs out there that people are going, oh gosh, there's another sign.
Like a stop sign?
Like a stop sign.
Sorry, I had to do that.
I'm following you home.
Sorry.
That's good. We have to remember that. But, so we certainly want to be selective about this. We want these things to have a big name for the buck. So, and also keep in mind that we're going to be asking that we use the funds that we have allotted for, you know, your decal project to help fund these. We as a city, at Public Works, will donate staff time to install them. But we'd like the purchasing to come from your decal, voluntary decal program. So just make sure.
What was the price for any bikes?
$55 a sign. You know, with that, this is, we have enough for.
The price for each one of these signs, I think the 18 by 18, about $75.
Were they 75? I'm sorry. So it was 12 by 12 that we could.
So that, that intersection right there is perfect because there's, there's several bicycle clubs outside of Gilroy and inside of Gilroy that go through that intersection. You know, and specialized bicycle also comes down Day Road and makes a right, or down Santa Teresa makes a right on Day as well. So I think that, I think that's definitely a keeper.
It's a great spot.
The next spot is kind of close by Gilroy Score Park. And the reason why it kind of shows us too, is, you know, we have a big parking lot. It's a lot, anytime we have games, there's a lot of people that's drawing. You know, we have really nice trails upon them trails there, so it's a class one protected. And the community has full access, so like any sign here, it's a good location to get seen whereas, you know, we are.
Agreed. I agree.
We're supposed to be voting on all of them as we do?
Thumbs up? So why don't we do, like, like a thumbs up and then you guys can?
So, so I guess, so we're so if we're saying that we're paying for them, I assume we have $317. That means we have four max that we can get. So I, I'm just trying to figure out, are we voting for, are those four going to go today? Or these are all great locations for signs we're all for, and then we'll figure out later where those four go?
I would say let's pick our top seven or eight signs.
Okay.
And the rest of the locations, let's say, you know, do you like the locations? Do you not like the locations? But let's definitely identify the top seven.
Okay, so why don't we just kind of go through them all?
Yeah, we'll do it after.
And we'll note it and then let's see what we think. It might be easier that way. So far, I like them all. I might find out like all 14 and get some amount of money.
Number three is also kind of along the trail as well, but this is more closer toward Chesa. As you've probably seen right now on West Chesa, it's not a bicycle group. So for people to come off 10 Streets going on the parkway, this location can also showcase that we have the bike trails off Chesa. And it's close again to a class one bike trail down there. Which I think is a good location.
Neuron, that location, do we also have some signage on the street that identifies the bike trail?
It's a little bit harder to see there. We don't have up fronts because there was an intersection right on the right. It's not, it's not showing.
Yeah, the problem with there is you're going to say where it's great cycling community and then you're going to hit the bridge. And you go, oh, there's glass, there's a bridge. I mean, I read it.
So maybe not a great place to highlight.
Not yet, not yet.
I have it down as a number two right now.
Yeah, not yet.
But I agree, I think the thinking process.
Four and five is right off the, basically against kind of going through highlights of the trails. We have a lot of traffic coming through, going through Christmas Hill Park. So these two locations will basically go along the south part of the trail.
Yes, so my suggestion there, I like that location too, but, you know, we don't have enough money for all of these. It's maybe one of those could possibly work.
So these, this is a location that I thought, Neuron, that was real high value because
Absolutely, I agree.
You've got a lot of not only bicycles and pedestrians, but vehicles that are traveling through this area as well. Not only for just visiting the park, but, you know, during the Garlic Festival.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of activity. This is a real high spot where we can showcase that we have that bike company.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in total agreement. Just they're two side by side. So, you know, it's kind, I think, one of these direction somehow, but I'm just looking at, if we have a budget, we can get four. I agree. Two, half the budget's right on this one, so I'm just. But I like those.
Would you like number one, the category?
Four. And here's the reason why, is because that's more visible for that bike valet at Garlic Festival.
Sure. And as you're going into the park, it's to the right as you look.
Yeah. And that's where everybody's going to be dropping their bikes off.
Number six, is this right off the Earth Street Roundabout? Right before the roundabout, if you're going down Santa Teresa, we have, you know, basically the bike trails that go off this. And basically now we have none of this continuing to be hacker pass.
Can you show us the Google or anything like we talked about?
That would be close by the roundabout here. So right after the bridge, we have some locations of those spaces here. One, two.
Two for me.
Let's, let's go through them and then we'll come back to you.
Is that Hacker Pass Trail, has that been accepted into the city yet to add to the bike map?
I think this trail has been accepted a lot of ways, yeah.
So we can, we can add it?
Let's, we'll see.
Number seven, so this is going a little bit more to the core downtown. This is on Sixth Street.
You can go back to the other map if you want, so it's easier.
So this is as you're going westbound from the bridge and as you're going into downtown, there's a, there's a parking lot there. There's also a public parking lot just of that. So, you know, eventually, you know, you just start.
Is that where our entry sign is coming in off in Old Gilroy there?
No, it's not. Our, our signs don't come to Gilroy. Historic District is off Monterey, at Monterey right now. It's not. There's another sign that says Old, Old Gilroy on Six.
It's like a brick?
Yeah.
Brick? Pylon or something?
It's a street. So I was thinking about coming this way into the downtown area.
A ton.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, it's.
And that's one of our suggested routes to come in from the county roads too, to cycle into the train station and stuff.
So location seven, location eight is by the Alba. So this is on Leslie Road, so right after the one mile northbound off there. As you're coming into, basically into the city, the tourist stations. We have a little bit of bike in there and then the bike into two. So I think, you know, especially for people out of town, that would be a good location because Location nine is also on inside town. This is as you're coming off Highway 152. Right clear by the Best Buy in one more here. There's a as you come in, you can also make a reputation. We have a bike back on here. Lastly, this one is on the Millera and Santa Teresa Roundabout is also going. As you're coming into town, this is the first, you know, on Santa Teresa, most of these are county jurisdictions. But as you're coming into the roundabouts, this is where the city's jurisdiction is. We have a bicycle facility there and also walking. This is location ten. There are, I'm a full location that is in green now because we don't have a bicycle facility there yet. But there are constructions that are coming here this year for.
So just could we talk about those locations?
Yeah. The first location is sign number eleven is at the intersection of Santa Teresa and First Street. So we will have a, a part of the
That's the trail.
Trail.
That's where you have it.
There's a trail here.
We can see. Well, what was that slated to be started on the Sunday? With the path along the river pass as well.
Yes.
So we had a development here last year.
Notice on the west side of town, we don't have a sign that's coming into town yet. So I'm proposing this most ones to trail.
Question.
Once the trails are finished, this location would be kind of close by the industrial area, like I hope. That's where he's not trapped. Number thirteen is actually on Monterey itself. Currently Monterey is not a bicycle route yet, but as we go into opening projects. Definitely take a couple of considerations and we can just call the sign. And the last one here would be on Monterey and Easy itself. Currently again, Monterey beside is not a bike route yet, but.
So like coming down Monterey going towards.
On Monterey, yeah. And as you cross over easily then, it'll just see in the next presentation, I'll have a class two.
Like right into it.
Maybe even on the south side as you're in the bike facility.
Okay.
So we have fourteen locations. I guess the, you know, eleven, twelve, question fourteen, I'm sure it's going to be in the future. Ten, so I think we will turn that just on.
So maybe if we could go sign by sign and you can tell us a one or two.
Okay, let's do that.
One, we'll look to install now and two, we'll look and see if there's additional funding.
Okay. And majority rules? You want to just do that for each one?
Your call.
Is that good? So that way we don't give.
Gary's gonna have to be the deciding vote.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Good point.
Okay.
Sign number one by San Teresa seventeen.
Yes.
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 I think that's a good.
Yeah, that's the number, yeah, that's number one.
Number one.
Number two by the sport car.
I say yes.
I say yes. Number one?
Yeah, number one, sorry.
So it's number four. One, so number two, right? We've got two left.
Location three.
Hold. Thumb down.
Yeah, thumb down.
Location four.
Yes.
Yes.
Location five?
Not now.
No.
Location six?
Yeah, not today.
I like all.
I think they'll get.
But I agree.
Yeah, I think they'll get hit.
And what we could probably do is probably, we should probably prioritize it later.
Yeah.
I mean, enough rather than being here's all the spots.
Yeah.
As you just, we get seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Here's the next one.
Location seven?
Not now.
So it's a no until?
So we have one left in my, instead of going through them all, I think ten is the next one. And I'll tell you why. Is because that's where Tiara, Tiara Bella goes and it's on the, the west side. It's on Santa Teresa over by Miller. Up there, I think it's, I'm kind of torn. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different things. Do we want, I know it's cars to see this. But at the same time, it's nice to know there's a cyclist who go wide that the city cares about cyclists.
I agree.
And so I like ten because of that. Um, it's definitely not a high, necessarily high traffic area. But I like the fact that, you know, here's the Tiara Bell's, pretty big cycling event comes through there. A lot of people ride that road. It's a nice road. Especially, you know, eventually we're gonna have a class two bike path beside the road, a class two bike path. I think it's, it says a lot. Um, and it's branding roundabout Miller will eventually become right on Tenth Street or whatever, but. And so I think that's probably where the fourth one is, but I'd like to hear from Beyonce's addition where they think.
I really want to get something on the east side. Like, I really want something either on Sixth Street.
I was thinking.
Or even.
I mean, and so here's the problem is now you have a lot of traffic. Cars are constantly coming by one fifty-two. They'll see it, but there's no bike stuff there, right? That's how we're kind of torn. It's one fifty-two is great because you're, all night, all night long, there's traffic heading north on one-on-one. They're coming by the outlets, you know, you got Best Buy having a nice sign saying, because you're coming into Gilroy there, right? It's probably the, other than one-on-one, it's probably the most trafficked added road there is.
Yeah.
But again, I don't know where you put it there. But I like, I absolutely agree you're coming from the east side.
On Sixth, well, he, he had, he had the one, number seven, I think it was on Sixth Street. Right before you come into the downtown core. I like, I like that one. That, I mean, it's already, we already have that protected bike bridge going over, right? The only way to get protected to the other side, to go to the clinics, go to Kaiser, do some shopping, you know, they have all that commerce. You know, little icicles and that kind of stuff.
So which way is it facing?
It would be coming into downtown.
So you're coming the other way.
Yeah, coming into downtown.
Personally, and here, you know, my two cents is that A, it's a share-o, which we're all pretty much against unless we have to do it. But I'm all for it, right? It is one of our bike routes. Um, so usually the cars just get mad. I don't ride that road because I know that I have to try to go as fast as I can because I have to take the road over. Um, personally, I come up from Chestnut Street over and shoot out of town. It's just my cycling. But again, you know, the signs there for both, right? It's meant not just for me riding my bike at the top, but. So I'm kind of torn on that one. That's the only reason why that one I'm not super, you know, and it's not as a busy of a road. Um, I think for, for.
Dude, it's super busy.
Met for cyclists, you know, it's busy for cars for sure, but I don't see, I don't, I rarely see bikes.
I ride it. I ride it with her.
So. You ride down the middle of the street?
Yeah.
Doing twelve miles an hour?
Oh, that, well, normally either there's no cars there or there's a ton of cars there.
So I, I think I remember hearing some interest from the commissions to have something in and around the downtown to support bikes.
I know Patrick wanted that too.
There's no real sign that's proposed going into the downtown or around the downtown, other than this sign seven location here. Is there another spot? And again, we want to, we want to locate these where there are bike facilities. We don't want to put something going into the downtown where there are no bike facilities, even though there's bike parking there. Is there another location in and around the downtown that does have a bike facility that we want to?
That we, that we could capture cyclists and cars.
Well, I mean, I think, I think, you know, the, and again, that's what I'm kind of torn between both, but I think having cars, knowing that we are wrecked. You're gonna keep seeing bike stuff because we have a bike commission, we're a bike, we're a bike brand in the community, right? I mean, I think that's a good, good sign for us, so.
And remember too, that, that, this is, we decided that last year through Carolyn, that, that rather than the county focusing on using Patekko Pass as a route into, we wanted them to use Sixth Street, right? So if you come up Holes Claw and all that other area, um, you know, use that. And, and a lot of people go out to the, um, up there to the hot springs and stuff like that too. Just imagine like on the weekend.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You know, into getting them to flow into our downtown and at least Sixth Street. I know what you're saying. It's on a share-o, but at least it goes into our civic center, our, through our downtown, through City Hall. And then it's, it is on a dedicated, you know, bike lane eventually till it's rented.
Sure.
Don't limit it because of the number of signs. Yeah, so we can always pick up another couple of signs. And even if you want to put it as a one B. We can, we can figure something.
I'll say as long as, as long as the, the fifth sign is number ten, I'm all for seven to be in the fourth sign. I just, I really think, especially Tiara Bella coming, if we can find a way to get a fifth sign, I just, I, again, I like the, the, I think it's a lot of cyclists use entries.
I agree.
And a lot of cars. And it's just, I think it really gets most.
Well, I, I completely agree. And, and you solved me because I really didn't think that having that sign on Santa Teresa. From a vehicle standpoint, it made sense, but I didn't know how many people used or bicyclists used Santa Teresa. But you made a very good point with the, with the races that go on there. I keep forgetting about those. Yeah, that's, that's a real important place to have.
And they do have facilities for, you know, for the students to park for Gavelin too. And a lot of those students from Gavelin are coming from Gilroy.
What about location eight?
I, I like the out, I mean, I think just, I think that's great visibility out there for, for, for outlets.
Yeah, if you want to add on another.
I don't think Zach's gonna even ride over there. I mean, this is, this is pushing it now from, as a cyclist per se.
This is selling it to.
But I'm, I like that.
I would, I, I, I would give it a thumbs up. If, if, if the funding could exceed to reach it. And like I said, for the outreach, then I would go for it. And I feel the same way as eight as I do with nine. I mean, it's a beautiful class two bike lane that's out there. There's a ton of things to do. Most of those new businesses have bicycle parking already. You don't even have, we don't have to go up to them and ask them for it. It's already there. At most of all those facilities that were built.
You know, if we added both eight and nine as a number one, category one, what do we have to?
That's seven.
Yeah, treat, yeah, ask, ask for one.
So that'd be, that'd be seven, because then we'd have one, two, four, ten, seven.
Just confirming what, confirm locations again, right?
And I am absolutely all for twelve.
Location two. Location four. Location ten, seven, eight and nine.
Damn.
Seven side.
And then, and then eleven, twelve will have the developer to install.
I love twelve. And then you come in the city, it's just nothing but, you know, you just come off the mountains and just bam, there it is.
Yeah, we'll just provide this, we'll buy the signs provided, it's all for Dan, it's awesome.
Okay. And ma- maybe even that one, maybe even thirteen eventually. If that commercial corridor kind of goes through, you know, you're down the road, maybe, maybe they can contribute to that.
And we get the state to pave the road.
Yeah.
Probably hit a potholes with this.
Slow down. Okay. Okay.
So I get, the question is, is. I guess we just do that if we, as we get more money and we want to do it, we'll just do a second one, as opposed to prioritizing.
So we'll see if we can go with all these. So is there a needed action on this?
No, I, I would say that we already.
Given us feedback.
We're gonna give you, giving you feedback on it.
Do you need anything else on that, yeah?
Um, any members in the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Um, okay. So that was a received update and comment. Uh, next up would be the First Street State Highway one fifty-two, um, bicycle pedestrian improvements update.
So I'm going to get that one up again. Uh, so this is a presentation that we've had, I've given now a number of times. Caltrans has come to the city. Uh, there's a paving project that they're gonna be doing along First Street. Uh, First Street is, is many residents in the city know is in pretty, pretty bad shape. Paving scheduled for later on in the summer. And anytime you pave a project, you have a clean slate. And so, uh, both Caltrans and the city have a very strong interest in looking at some pedestrian and bicycle and transportation safety improvements out there. And we've been working really closely with Caltrans to try and ask them to incorporate some of those improvements in their project. Now, I want this to be really clear to both the commission and public, this is a Caltrans project. This is not a city project. So, uh, Caltrans has proposed certain things and they have asked the city to go out in the community and get input and feedback on the recommendations. And so this is the product. This is the new presentation that we presented to the community at a number of different outreach meetings to both the business and the residential community members. Talking about the potential impacts of the project, uh, but also identifying some of the benefits that are being proposed as part of this Caltrans project. So it starts off with a little bit of an update, talking about where we've gotten or how we've gotten to this point. Some of the other projects that are going on out there right now. And then, uh, talking about again, some of the enhancements that, uh, Caltrans projects will present.
So that's it then.
End of the presentation.
Any questions?
Okay, fine. So today, as you mentioned, this is a Caltrans, a Caltrans project. Um, so we'll call a little bit of background in terms of what is First Street and then what's Highway one fifty-two, what's there. And have kind of general information on those. And we'll go into the current condition of how First Street or Highway one fifty-two are being used. And then propose upgrades that Caltrans are proposing. So first slide, First Street, um, is Caltrans jurisdictions. It is called Highway one fifty-two. It started, um, from, um, one-on-one. It's going, um, westbound towards, um, Santa Teresa. First Street right now has roughly about twenty thousand seat seats that, uh, people per day are highly used. It is also one on Main Truck Route, which is also on Main Green Central as well. On First Street right now, you might have noticed that we have a lot of projects going on. We've been installing, um, water main also right now. Current basis is calling the, um, uh, latals of this project is, you know, set to start, um, and finish by July of this year. That's where we put the way of Caltrans to go come in and do a lot of our payment project. So the Caltrans project is set to start sometime in late summer two thousand and nineteen. This project, like Gary mentioned, includes the payment, the payment realizations. We'll do a little bit of school drain improvements on First Street. We'll do, um, minor sidewalk accessory upgrade for EDA. Drive improvement. And of course, it really is also the complete street, bicycles and that sort of thing. It will also be signal mod, signal modifications and also lane configurations within the law of the movement. Right now, Caltrans have not given us a full schedule yet, but they have been doing most of these work in the night. Some of the minor work at concrete and whatnot, those might have to be done today, but maybe there are moving that at night. So in terms of, of current condition of First Street, as you mentioned, it's a highly used, it's about twenty thousand people per day. And it's changing current, uh, current to a state quite often. So as you can see, we have divided First Street into four different segments. There's a segment on Monterey itself, just because it has changed randomly and also a little bit of usage as well. The first segment of First Street is about A five B uncurper. It's the widest, uh, sections of First Street. This is coming from, um, Santa Teresa, Fort Worth to Red Avenue to the, uh, the area of downtown here. This segment has two lanes, two traveling on each side, also have two-way left turn lanes on the center. And majority of this road, we do not have, um, parking, on-street parking. There's, you know, a small number of parking. The next segment is getting a little bit narrower. Five, seven, and this deal, a, uh, two lane on these directions with a two-way left turn lane. And at some location, it has a protected, uh, left turn lane. And again, majority of this is parking. In the area of the sequel on its, um, Red Avenue to. Third segment, it's getting twelve. This is from seventy to sixty-five. This segments of First Streets is now going from two-lane directions to one-lane directions. We still have dedicated, um, left turn lanes, two-way turn lanes in the center. And starting to get more, um, parkings on the side, on-street parking. Segment four, this is the smallest segment. It is only fifty feet from curper to curper. It's one lane on each side, just like segment number three, but, um, again, it has parkings on both sides. It's no parking reserved out there at this time. The next segment is Monterey itself. It's from First Streets to Wilbur. This is, um, really wide segment. It has two lane on each side with a common median and also eight to nine foot parking on the side. Yeah, um, as I mentioned, um, there are some parking areas in First Street. Majority of the parking that we have is from Miller Avenue to East Contour, um, also there's parking. A lot of parkings on Monterey. There's, um, a couple of spots here and there is on First Street itself, you know, going westwards towards Santa Teresa. But majority of it is already being marketed. So why is this important? The Caltrans First Street project is now thinking about incorporating, um, complete street, which is including bicycle facility. Upgrading pedestrian facility. So this in a way will affect, will impact the on-street parking on First Street. So what we did, um, is we went and do a parking use extension on a typical weekday and also on a typical weekend. Typically roughly from eight o'clock in mornings to about seven, eight o'clock at night. Um, but we found that out of all those parkings being, uh, out, all those parking available on First Street. Only about twenty between five of them are being used. Out of those twenty-five percent, some of those are being used for, as far as I want. As you can see, you know, when you get driven out and count this one by one, there's fourteen car park mixed around a school. And out of those fourteen car, all of them are sold. And they were there on weekday and. So with that, what are some of the benefits that this prostitute brings? So like Gary said, and every time we do a paving project, it's kind of. For us, giving us opportunity to incorporate multiple different components to this, one of the components, safety. And we have been getting, in fact, um, we landed reports from Tim Berkeley looking at the, um, traffic intersections. Three of these sections on First Street was on the top five most dangerous intersections of the world. That is people that screen ten by ten. So safety is our first, um, also have almost, wanting to, to address here. Second is make sure we're doing eighty improvement. Um, and then we'll also get the opportunity to incorporate the street. Update, um, student green matter plan and also incorporate. And also incorporate bicycles and pedestrians access to, according to our travel map planning, certainly. And last but not least, encourage more, as I was saying, the whole of the most high risk. So what is complete street? You know, I've been mentioning complete street lots, the city of Gilroy have adopted complete street in two thousand and twelve, uh, Caltrans adopted a complete street in two thousand and eleven. Our complete street aims to use comprehensive, integrated transportation network with infrastructures and design that while saving, enabling travel along and across street range, including pedestrians, bicyclists, persons with disabilities, owners, mover of commercial goods, users, operation of public transportation, seniors, children, youth, parents. That is exact definitions of what our complete street policy. Now with that, complete street has a lot of benefits. It helps support, you know, physical activity, improve public health and safety, it's going to provide options and access for non-drivers. Uh, decrease vehicle trips, you know, we have seen little Vincent Town and, you know, wanted a way to combat these, encourage, um, uh, alternative, uh, transportations. It's improved, uh, mobility, uh, by life community and enhanced transportation cost. And again, uh, in our development. With that said, there is a little bit of a conflict between on-street parking and street. As I mentioned, complete street accounted for vehicle, pedestrians and bicyclists. So with on-street parkings, we starting to see some issues, especially on the First Streets, as you can see in the picture below. Isopolis, sometimes riding on the road, you have problems with the door, right? Second, vehicle-to-vehicle conflicts, we have people's wheeling into parallel parking, sometimes especially on weekends, when maybe there's a, uh, long rush on and people trying to get to, have that situations. And also, sometimes it forces, uh, bicyclists to ride on the sidewalk, basically feel safer on the sidewalk, a lot of that is definitely, like, and this ones is a little bit small, but also creating pedestrian and vehicle conflict, especially when it comes to sight distance. This one is a picture, you can see people are right there by, uh, the shopping center next to Brown Hill, by the green shop. This guy's on the, uh, walkers trying to cross, and it's very difficult for all to see him because of all these sale maneuver parking right there. So now let's talk about all the upgrades that Caltrans proposes. First one is vehicle safety. Vehicle safety, as we've seen, yeah, at sight distance. Um, as you can see, this plaza up in the right corner here, this is right across from Brown Hill, there's, uh, grocery store there, there's bike shops, and, uh, there's another, um, kind of, he has to sort of, store. Off-street parking, they have a parking lot with their customer, but sometimes we have people parking on the street. And when this happened, it created a really difficult situation for drivers. It's really discouraging parking in the parking lot because it's very difficult trying to get out and go in. If, as you can see, the right vehicle, you won't have no sight distance from the driver, people see them coming apart. And, you know, in traffic, I mean, this is one classic and most dangerous situations that we can have. Second is, on First Street itself, we don't have a lot of dedicated turn. We have the center turn lane, you know, for left turn, but on right turn, we do not have. Um, there's usually car parking opposite the corner of these sections, and, you know, forces vehicles to come around to make that right-hand corner. And occasionally, you probably see, when people don't signal, sometimes they make the right turn. This causes, you know, uh, basically a difference in speed, which then can result in the, uh, crashes. So these two locations are here, the one on the top right corner, this is where I buy Brown Hill, um, the ones up on that, this one is by me. The next one. So, to combat some of this, what Caltrans were proposing is to add the protected left, uh, right turn lane. This protective right turn lane allows people to accelerate properly, right? Be out of the way from bicyclists and maybe able to make a safe right turn. And that's also happening on left turn pockets as well. So, as you can see, sometime going on First Streets, trying to make a left turn, church, uh, from First Street to church, it's very difficult because it's something called a commissal left turn. So car have to basically yield on the need to make a left turn. While Caltrans, including Street Count, has had a protected left turn. So you will have the green, um, left turn signal at most of these sections.
Can I just plug in there, one second? What you see here also is the way that Caltrans is proposing to treat the right turn pockets with the bike lanes. And you see how they're bringing the, the lanes from the curbside, uh, through then into between the right turn pocket and the through lane. And those are also areas, which are identified as conflict points, which are going to be green.
Yes!
Like you're talking about right there, right?
Yep.
Absolutely, that is. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Next one is the pedestrian safety upgrades. As you can see in, on First Street, sometime they have on location, like there's a program and does not have a possible. So what Caltrans is proposing to do is including Hyvins Crosswalk and also added a rectangle around Flushing Weekends. We have a few in downtown, um, these things are, uh, great, they increases, um, vehicle compliance. We have those units in the pedestrian, you can see, uh, at, and at Fire. Um, last time, last year, when that, um, Flushing Weekend went out, we had a lot of people, a lot of people, and get that, these things back. So, uh, the community will be like this, and also start having them now in downtown, hopefully, in downtown. To go a step further, Caltrans on, uh, higher speeds and higher volume, they are proposing to include a hop. And so basically, it's a high-intensity activated crosswalk, which is a fancy term for pedestrian's signal. This is right now being proposed for Monterey and Al.
Monterey and what?
How? And also, of course, the ADA compliance, and the, all the program along First Street will be upgraded to a new standard, uh, Caltrans has a new standard now for ADA compliance, which is taking all this stuff to assist, uh, pedestrians. Last but not least, the bicycle upgrade. The first one is to actually include a protected class two by lane with upper. Um, it's going to be from what I've seen in the plan right now, it's roughly, um, sixty-seven, uh, five to six feet of bicycle lane plus a two or three feet of upper. Um, trying to, using, all the parking on First Street to be able to accommodate this. Um, as Gary mentioned, we also have green bicycle lane, um, at conflict points, right, what is actually, what happens in section one, two, three. That would be a great visual cue for all vehicles, you know, that can, vehicle and bicyclists, uh, on the road. So all these locations where to green, is Caltrans proposing to, uh, the walls are. We're going to council to enable First, uh, to present, um, and to get the, uh, council, um, to provide Caltrans directions on, uh, pedestrian project.
This is my ears.
That was great, you knocked it out the park. That was, that was a good, good presentation, great presentation. Yeah, a lot of culmination of every, every, a lot of input, a lot of work, I get it.
Thanks to Caltrans, too.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I hope that the city of Gilroy and Caltrans, both those, the, you know, big agencies here, really take advantage to show what we can do with an old outdated highway. Um, you know, it's the first district in the state of California to have its own bike plan. Um, and we've laid the map out to have everything right go in there. Um, you know, and I, 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 I mean, I, I think you guys, both agencies deserve a pat on their backs of what you can do. Um, because I know some, and, and, you know, I know it's real easy just to put the roadway back the way it was. That's the simplest way to do it. But I'm glad that they took, everybody took this opportunity to, to make all these, um, improvements. It's going to look fantastic.
Well, I, I'd like to also thank my predecessor, who really, you know.
Michael Fisher.
Who really pushed it hard and got this in front of Caltrans early on during the initial phases of this. We were able to accept it, digest it a little bit, and, uh, us continuing to push hard and work with them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to be able to hopefully bring it home, uh, when they go to construction later on some.
Thanks.
A quick question, now you had capacity, the parking capacity was less than thirty percent, like the maximum is a thirty percent of capacity, what is the total of parking spaces?
It's about a hundred twenty, that's counting the parking on Monterey.
Yeah, so a hundred twenty total, so, and anybody with Monterey? Mr. First Street is?
Um, I think First Street is roughly seventy, it's not ten million. We're moderating things and calculating.
And so, so half the cars parking are for sale, almost.
There was a lot of cars, we did see a lot of vehicles out there, but in no case did we find, uh, locations where there wasn't adjacent onsite parking that could accommodate the loss of the on-street parking.
I just remember when First Moon here, you park all on First Street, on Safeway and stuff, and I remember, uh, when I read the paper, and I was involved with this a lot, but I just remember them mentioning it was mostly for sale cars along, along there, that's why they stopped.
Uh, do you need any sort of letter of support from this commission for that April first presentation to council that we would support?
It's going Monday night for council to approve a resolution, uh, and then we'll get that to Caltrans, finalize their plans.
Cool. Any members from the public that wish to comment? Would this be the opportunity to, why don't you come on up, Karen, so we can, we can hear you?
I, I just wasn't clear on whether comments are still being gathered from, comments and questions, or is it, or is that being?
We are still gathering input, I guess at this point. Caltrans has called their plans final, uh, but we know there's still some changes that we're going to be requesting of them. Uh, so if it's, uh, if there's a minor change at this point, I think we could still ask Caltrans to go ahead and make that. Do you have a recommendation or a question or suggestion?
Just from personal experiences and work at places where we have a hop system right outside, and it seems to have been more of a first, it's kind of saying, you gotta assign it to people, what to do with this.
Yeah. Yeah, clearly, anytime you put something like that, it'd be an education process and, like, it's, I'm sure, folks understand what that is now.
Matt just had a question, with the signal changing, uh, is there going to be more bike sensors going in?
That's a good question, I believe there is.
Because, um, I've seen it on the Striving Plan, they have those, uh, bikes involved, if I need to move it, it's contacted. It's not cameras, it's completely.
We just got the electrical plans this week, and we're still coming through them. We've had the striping plans for a while, but we just got the signal plans in this week. So you say, so we do have, they are, there's bike detection in each of the, uh? Good. Are they doing loop detectors or cameras?
Um, you're on, so when, when this is finished, we'll be able to update the bike map to add more the mileage? And so is that, is that true with the other facilities too, as they come in? Or are you just going to do like one update on the bike map? Or, like you were saying, Eckerd Pass might be a part of?
I'd rather do it on the, like, on a total basis.
Cool.
So, yeah, I'd rather do it on the total basis, so if there's new stuff coming in, and it's a March or June somewhere.
Nice, nice, thank you. Um, anything else from anybody else? Good?
Thank you, Darren.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck on Monday, are you presenting? Or are you presenting?
You have to present.
Yeah, nice job. Put him up there, you did good. Good job. Um.
It's until we determine.
Yeah. I'll make five presentations, but.
Uh, next up is, uh, old business, um, A B, General Plan Advisory Committee update, Commissioner Reed.
Uh, the next meeting is this Thursday, and also next month I'll have an update.
Okay. Uh, any members in the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Uh, next up is A B, Safe Ruses School update, Commissioner Sean Reed.
I mean, let's just have some quick updates on some events, um. We still have mapping meetings going on for the maps that we made for each school. There's one more meeting at Brown Hill, uh, on Thursday from three-thirty to five-thirty. And, um, at the meetings that have happened, middle schools have had, uh, elementary school maps as well as from that middle school. Our commission was sent an email from Public Health that if we want to provide any additional feedback, that we need to get it to them by April fifth to have any of our comments, um, that don't have those meetings, or any suggested changes to the maps that we made. I attended with some public health representatives, the main school district parent meetings that happen at district office. And we promoted these mapping events as well as did a report on all the safer school things that have been happening over the last few years and what the status of the future is, and, uh, made sure all the parents in those meetings were aware and that we need their involvement. We need their volunteer help at the schools. Uh, we suggested that they, uh, the schools make sure they have somebody lined up, if they know somebody that's been coordinating safer school events, uh, they have someone lined up to replace them. I attended a, um, meeting, actually a couple of different meetings where we're working with, um, community members and, uh, leaders at San Ysidro Park Community Center and Rebecca's Children's Center to start, um, walking events when there are major events at San Ysidro Park, uh, from South Valley Middle School. I encourage people to park there and do an organized walk, like, like a walking school bus sort of thing to those park events, to, uh, help encourage people to be active and walking, and also because, um, there's not a lot of parking by that park either. And we have scheduled to have a major event, or we might give that a try, on June twenty-first is where the big summer, um, party is happening at that park in the evening. That's a Friday evening, June twenty-first. On June twenty-second, we have scheduled for the turning event, turning wheel event to happen at the library. Uh, we're hoping to give some support to that event with some kind of bike, uh, safety activities similar to what happens when we do safer st- school activities at the schools. I don't think I have anything else, did, was there something else on safer school that you were?
Uh, I can't think of anything else. Chad, anything? Any members in the public that wish to comment? All right, thanks for the update. Uh, all right. New business, there is none. Um, correspondence, uh, it was the Silicon Valley Bicycle Commission Bike to Work Day, events in English and Spanish, and also that, the mapping meetings, uh, flyer that Chad, I mean, I'm sorry, that, um, that Commissioner Reed also talked about. And, uh, next month, um, we'll, we'll do more talking about the Bike to Work Day event. Um, so next up is oral reports by commission members. Um, Vice Chair Sean Reed, you want to go first?
I think I've covered anything already.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Chad Reed?
Okay, so I think, uh, around the commission, this, uh, CC, uh, the tomorrow, uh, seventh period, I have no idea what time that is.
One to two.
One to two. Uh, yeah, some guest speakers, I don't know if anybody looked in the videos, pretty, this couple was just cycling all around, like they came from Europe and now they've gone through the US. I stopped and gave a little presentation to the school. Again, keep building on bikes at Source Island Middle School, it's a riding boat grand, hopefully we'll have a pump track there and then, uh, right across the street in the near future, if we can get them off campus for field trips, maybe every Friday, so. Um, and then I just saw that Tera Bella is before our next meeting, so just throw it out there. Saturday, April thirteenth is Tera Bella, talking about having signs there on Santa Teresa, so Saturday, thirteenth, look for a whole bunch of bikes coming through the city of Gilroy, give them three feet. And so.
All right, um, I just have a couple of updates, like Chad mentioned, the BMX Pump Truck, um, park at, uh, Christmas Hill Park should be coming back in front of council in, uh, May of two thousand and nineteen. Um, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition is still taking proposals for their, um, Bike Summit, so if anybody has any suggestions, they can go to their online, online site. Um, April twenty-seventh is the Silicon Valley Bicycle, I'm sorry, Silicon Valley Clean Energy Bike to the Future Event. They had the inaugural event last year, which was held here at Gilroy Gardens, where you get high school students, um, with mentors basically building their own e-bikes. And, uh, so our Gilroy Gecko is representing Gilroy this year. And, um, I'm unfortunately working at the firehouse on the twenty-seventh, um, I was asked to be a judge, I had a, a ton of fun doing it last year. Um, I did tell them that if, uh, if they needed anybody to fill the spot from Gilroy, that we could find somebody to.
Sure.
Um, so, April twenty-seventh is a Saturday, um, and it's being, I, I don't remember what city it's being held in, but it's being held up north, um, this time. Um, I also want to, uh, say that Recology, the general manager, um, he was very receptive to. I also want to say that Recology, the general manager, he was very receptive to our initial thoughts of a campaign to kind of, you know, keep the trash cans clear of the bike lanes. He, he says that he is willing to, that they are willing to put in documents of anything that we end up creating, they just need to either have the city of Gilroy letterhead or, or something from Recology. They do have a standard flyer that they will send out every now and then and shows like the distance of the carts. But what it doesn't have is anything about their, about not blocking the bicycle lane. And so he's agreed to, to put that in there and also to put in the the terms that, you know, cans belong in the curbside. That was another thing that wasn't written on that, that, that general flyer. So we're going to sort of build off that. We'll bring, bring that back at some other point. Um, I met with the, the property manager, the owner at the Piazza where the West Side Grill is. And to talk about bicycle parking there, they have one rack, but it's kind of old and outdated. It's, doesn't really provide two points of contact. Yeah, Snap Fitness is there, there's yoga studios, hair salons, West Side Grill. So I basically just talked with them a little bit about more modern bicycle parking and the same stuff that we've been telling a lot of people and he was very receptive and that they're going to be putting in some, some bicycle parking there and, and maybe even you know, trying to do something different, like whether it's create a bicycle corral or something like, there's some other stuff like that. So if there's any updates on that, I'll bring that back to you. And I also have been working with the community development department here in Gilroy and the Chamber of Commerce to also try to modernize Gilroy Synolux Theaters, their bicycle parking, the same thing, they have a rolling rack. And so we've been reaching out to them. It sounds like that's not going to be coming through like a development process because they're just working off building permits. So there's, it's not going to go through that, but community development is still watching it on like an economic development front. So modernizing that walkability and the bikeability is on there. April 1st, speaking of next council meeting, April 1st, VTL will be presenting the updated transit plan. That's probably one of the last opportunities to do that. And Sumano Bakery, that project that we provided input on is coming in front of the planning commission on April 4th as well. So that's all I have. Number of, next up is Stop Comments.
Is, I just got a question. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but is the, you sending the drawings to Zach? Is there anything not working with that?
So far, so good. They're, come up with an internal process. We're still trying to refine it where the planners will send me projects and where there are projects of relevance, where there is bicycle parking, where it's just not a ten improvement, something of substance. I send them to Zach and then he provides feedback. This hasn't been that much of a call on them.
You're up. If you have anything, yeah.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to indicate is today, Niran and I did have an opportunity to listen to webinars on FHWA has come up with a new document on bikeway selection. And again, it's a guide to help staff identify when to put in bike facilities and what bike facilities to use. A lot of modifications on the same stuff that we all know, but it's always good to continue to hear information and hear how stuff is presented. So it, it helped educate a little more. So it was, it was a good document and it was a good hour spending listening to people talk about bikes. So it was very educational and helpful. So, yeah. Other than that, I have no other comments.
All right. What is that something that we would be able to watch if we wanted to somewhere on the internet?
Potentially, yeah, it's FHWA. If you Google bikeway selection guide.
Is, do they have regular stuff that we can put on the, our training document?
They could, yeah.
FHWA?
FHWA does, yeah. Federal Highway Administration. They like Caltrans, like a lot of other agencies are starting to become more bike-friendly, put out more bike-friendly documents about how to and when to install bike facilities on their, their facilities.
Cool, I'll, I'll add that onto, onto ours. And feel free to, to share, I know you guys look at that, but you and Niran, but to other staff. Just like you said, there's free one-hour webinars pretty much every month on biking and walking. Okay, so next up is agenda items for next meeting. I have one that, that we'll bring up is the Bike to Work Day. So we'll just have that as a general topic and we'll talk about you know, the bags and the deadlines and all that. I've been getting emails about it, but we'll just, we'll sum it all up and figure out who's going to go out there and staff it and and that kind of stuff. So that's, that's one. And then we'll try to work on the, we'll try to bring this document back and put it in the consent calendar. The, the public bike fund. Oh, is the, would the end of April, would that be an appropriate time to bring the any bike and bed projects from the CIP, the budget set? It sounds like that stuff will be presented, I think, in May. Will, will they be finalized enough for us to be able to provide some input and sort of know how we can advocate and help you guys when it comes to the budget?
We're going through the internal review process right now. I think in April, we certainly can share with you what's going to be presented to City Council.
Okay.
I will tell you that it's very, very limited there.
You, you gave us the list that captured in the last meeting.
The, the list that I think I shared was a big vast list that we're going to be taking during the CIP, which is in two years. So this year is the operating budget. It's a status quo budget, you know, that has to, to spend the same money we did last year as next year. And, but there are some very select projects that we are bringing forward that we're going to ask to include that I can share with you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, that would be great because then that way we know, we know where we can get up there and speak, speak on behalf of those. Um, what else? I don't have anything else. Does anybody have anything else they want to add?
Yeah. Michelle Wexler is interested in giving a presentation on Proposition 68 funding. There's, that's potential funding for both trails and, but especially for parks, but there's also trail funding. And there's a round of funding that will be decided this year and there also will be rounds of funding in the future. She would like to give us information about that. Did I, did I mention for the record, Michelle Wexler is?
No.
No, okay, so she's, she works for Public Health and she also is a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. And a Gilroy resident. Newly.
All right, well, I don't have anything else. Does anybody have anything else? All right. So German to the next regular meeting, April 23rd at 6:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.